August 18th, 2015, City of Statesboro City Council Meeting. I would ask our meeting to begin. Ms. Britt, please introduce the invocation and pledge, please.
Absolutely, thank you Mayor. Bill Thomas. Thank you for today, and thank you for everything that you've brought for us, and thank you for the prosperity for our city. Just thank you for the work that we all get to do together and work, and to make our community just stronger. We ask that you bless this meeting, and that your hands on each one of our public servants as they go about doing their job. We thank you again for everything you offer us. May they say this year, amen. Do you quickly stay with me for the pledge, ladies?
Pledge, ladies, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
There is something that wasn't on the agenda, which is our public recognition presentation portion, and I know that Up With People was supposed to be here to give a presentation in the city. Do we have anybody from Up With People in the audience?
Chat.
Stop.
He can dance.
Stop. Okay, in that case, what we turn next is in the idol, which is Agenda Item 3, Public Comments. Ms. Sue, do we have anybody that regard, public comments regarding Agenda Item? Do we have anybody that has signed up to do that? Okay?
Pardon me, I'm sorry, I did. I'm Bill Thomas. I signed up to be recognized for public comments and Agenda comments.
Ms. Sue, did you just say you wanted to be on the agenda?
I think if you'll check, I can show you the record. I made it clear that I want to be on there for both. I have it in my phone, Mayor.
That's okay. I mean, go ahead. Come on up for public comments on Agenda Item. Just remind them, please limit your comments to two minutes, please, for resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Sue. Thank you, Mayor. Guys, it occurs to me over the last eight or nine years that there have been a number of things called into question by me, and I've been limited to three minutes. Now it's two minutes. I noticed that if a community activist comes before you, they're allowed to speak for 30 minutes while you guys stand up there and roll your eyes. I've also noticed that within two minutes, I've got policemen on each arm whisking me away when I have something material to say. So it's really not you that I'm speaking to. I think that we ought to give folks who have something constructive to say more than two minutes. I move that we begin doing that immediately. I hope to make that point by encouraging all of the city employees to continue to get information to me and to the FBI. Stanley Slater, FBI agent, can be reached at 912-515-5746. For those of you who have a camera, please take my picture. These people behind me, I hold in contempt. It's you who I'd like to speak with.
Mr. Thomas, you are out of order. That is out of order. You can speak to council, that's the point of having a public comment.
Y'all will make a case, make one, though. I'm just asking you for your.
Thank you. If you would like, Mr. Thomas, if you would like to, if you would like to speak to council, you are certainly allowed to do so. On Agenda Items in this particular section.
Do I have any more time left, Mayor?
You're at one minute and 32 seconds.
Okay.
I would ask that you step to the podium to do so.
Thank you, Mayor. Many of you have received information packets that I delivered to you today. The first is a conversation between city council, okay? This was a conversation held illegally without the benefit of the public eye, plotting to fire Police Chief Stan York and Dennis Merrifield. I would encourage you guys to read that packet, and ask me if you have, if you have any questions, be sure to let me know. The second item in there is a memorandum for the Employee Relief Fund, whereas money is alleged to be missing. The third would be a letter from South Carolina law enforcement regarding the man that these people hired as the city manager. Mr. Britt and others on this board hired Shane Haynes. He's been indicted and is under investigation in South Carolina for that which he's done. And that is, if your employee will not do that which you want him to do, fire him and get one that will, no matter how illegal it is.
Mr. Thomas, your time is up.
Thank you.
And may I ask, next time that you choose to speak at this particular point in the agenda, to please speak to an Agenda Item.
I'm sorry, I thought I did. I talked about how short that Agenda Item was, and I gave an example of it. Given Ms. Carrie Howard got 30 minutes, I got two minutes.
Next time, this is the Agenda Item. Please speak to an Agenda Item. Thank you. Agenda Item 4, consideration of a motion to approve the consent agenda. I will ask council to please review the approval of minutes on the consent agenda, and then I'll ask for a motion, or to please give a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Can I make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please take my saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is, Penny?
Chelsea.
Chelsea, come on up, please. This is Chelsea with Up With People, and I'm going to backtrack a little bit, and ask you to give your public presentation.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Chelsea Glosser, and I'm a promotion representative for Up With People. Up With People is a global nonprofit where we have 110 young people that travel for six months all around the world doing community service. They stay with host families, then they perform a show. And Up With People is performing their show at Statesboro High School. It's called The Journey. It's going to be on August 28th at 7:00 PM at Statesboro High School. And tickets are $15 for adults, $10 for students, seniors, and, students, seniors and kids, excuse me. And the show is really fun. It's really family friendly. We have music from the 1960s up until today. We have music that's original songs and tracks since we've been an organization since 1965. There's a lot of different original music that we have. And then we also have pop music and international songs. So there's something for everyone, and we would really love if the city would support us being here, as well as if you would all come see our show and spread the word about our show that's going to be here in Statesboro. Thank you.
Well, thank you. When was the last time y'all were here?
In 2013, we were here in the spring.
We're very glad to have you back.
Thank you so much for having us. Thank you.
Thank you for coming to bring us to that.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Agenda Item 5, consideration of a motion to award a contract for the construction of two metal shelter additions at the public works facility to halt construction in the amount of $143,415. Mr. Britt.
Thank you. This is construction for two metal additions to positioning structures at the public works facility. The first open air will be to store CNG, our CNG refuse trucks and equipment. The other closed will be for additional office space for personnel involved in the program there. We obviously, we bid this out for public work law, the length and requirements for these additions. We had a mandatory pre-bid attended by five construction companies. The budget, as you see, is originally $130,000, the low bid is $143,415. We feel that's partly because we require stamped pre-engineered plans, and the estimate was probably not the best in the world, but we feel the $143,415 is a very competitive bid, thus we're recommending it. Again, five attended the pre-bid, we sent out appropriate addendums, and we're here recommending halt construction in the amount of $143,415, and that's Formley Smith Steel that we're borrowing out, and they've done a good work in the past.
What was the additional $13,000?
Jason might be able to speak to that.
Yeah, Darren's point is part of this is public work law, and the funding requirements that we didn't initially anticipate when we prepared the cost assessment. And the other part would be, we added additional height to the structure to allow clearance for CNG tanks.
And there was some code items also, and we're covering that additional $13,000 of operations.
That's right.
It's always collections operations.
That's right.
Any questions for Darren? Okay, now I have a motion to award a contract for the construction of two metal shelter additions at the public works facility to halt construction in the amount of $143,415.
Someone, Mayor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please take my saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, consideration, excuse me, Agenda Item Number Six, consideration of a motion to approve Resolution 2015-34, a resolution approving CT Recycling to perform curbside collection of recyclable, recyclable materials in the City of Statesboro as a pilot project. Jason.
A few months ago, Mr. Jeffrey Leggett with CT Recycling approached Robert and myself to introduce a recycling program here in the city, and I know there's been a lot of discussion back and forth with staff and council regarding how we want to proceed in that matter. And in the wake of Bullock County looking to suspend their recycling operations, we felt this was a great time to bring this back to our city council to get some direction on what we're going ahead. Mr. Leggett, you're in the audience.
Where is Mr. Leggett?
I'm here.
Mr. Leggett, you may come forward, introduce yourself, and tell us about what you're proposing, please.
Yeah, I'm Jeff Leggett. I live here in Statesboro. I'm a business owner here in Statesboro as well, and the idea kind of came across when my son kept, my 15-year-old son kept asking for money. I really wanted him to understand and learn more about business, and, you know, the idea of recycling was, you know, hoping for him and I, you know, that's when I had approached Robert and Jason, and, you know, didn't have any idea that the city was doing what they're doing. So, kind of ended up being a little bit bigger than what I, you know, thinking it was going to be, but my background is service, you know, and I can understand, you know, how the service industry works and what I need to do to make it happen. But, you know, how big it will get, I'm not really sure. You know, I'm more than welcome to, you know, if it grows to be bigger than what I had, you know, assumed it would be, we can sort of handle it, and I've got a couple guys that were willing to, you know, that didn't want to work if it got to where I couldn't manage it, nor my, you know, me and my son. But I didn't know if y'all had any questions, or if there was anything that I can answer as far as.
Well, I don't have any specific question I can necessarily, but I think this is probably the appropriate time to start talking about it, because certainly, I didn't have any idea. I certainly knew about your enterprise and the interest in doing recycling curbside, but I didn't know that we were at the memorandum of understanding quite stage, because we've been in discussions with the staff about trying to take over from where the county's left off. And so I guess that's what we need to talk about here. We could certainly talk about your business, and then I guess we need to talk about the topic as a whole. So, I mean, have you, I mean, I'm not, I'm just wondering, do you have experience in recycling business per se, or is this?
Not in recycling business. You know, I own a pest control company here in Statesboro, and been in the service industry for the last 18 years. Yeah, and I know Mr. Bill, you know, where it's created, but we, I've been doing that for quite some time, and, you know, so understand the service industry and how layout would need to be as far as demographic, we could be able to service the city, and was planning on actually servicing the county as well. You know, and, you know, of course, the charge would actually have to be more for me to be able to, you know, to be able to provide that service, you know, because I'd be providing smaller bins that would not be using the large trash cans.
If you probably do that, then just kind of explain to us, I guess, what, if we move forward this, tell us how that's going to work. Tell us just, A1, the business model.
What, the biggest thing, I've been working, speaking with George Southern, which, you know, they're right next door, you know, and they're, you know, both them and I have been speaking about a plan that we want to put together, and basically, everything that I want to be doing as far as payments, routing and everything, is I want to have it be internet-based on all the websites. The customer would go online, all my educational information and all what we recycle, which all those recyclables would be what, you know, the county accepts already. You know, and I've been speaking to, you know, Tom, Tom's already approved, you know, in an email saying that I can use the facility. All the recycling, not planning on using the recycling to making, you know, making money off of, all the recycling would be actually taken to, you know, the landfill for recycling. But the customers would actually go online, fill out all their application to be able to go through, and everything would be, payments would be going through there. When everything comes out, it'll show them the service state, you know, depending on where they're at in the city or the county. You know, and then we would go through and have certain days that we would actually pick up. I mean, very similar to a trash service, but, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to have stuff all over the place. You know, we're having these bins, but we're trying to figure out, you know, what would be more, you know, sufficient for 14-gallon bins or 18-gallon bins. A lot of those things, we're still in the process of going through, for some, like I said, it's been really helpful.
So you would bring it to, I guess currently, just to kind of, so we're talking, currently we have a container on the side of the road. It's dump all your trash. It's not, I mean, you dump all your recycling, and a truck comes around, picks it up, carries it to the landfill, a separate area, and someone sorts that into about five different bins. Those five different recyclables are then packaged up, and then sold. Is that what it is?
Correct. What I'll be doing is that.
And some people, you know, they haven't done that. So your plan would be to do that as well and pick up?
Right. Instead of a co-mingle service that is, you know, that's currently in place now, I'll actually be doing a dual-stream service to where the sorting would actually be there on curbside.
Okay.
You know, and the idea is to, to get as, as much out of the recyclable as possible. You know, we see so many times with the co-mingle services that so many things get contaminated, whether it's the paper, cardboard.
So the only contamination would be in the container that the homeowner had?
Right. And, you know, for instance, the two bins that I would provide would be for paper and cardboard, to keep that away from the aluminum, the plastics.
Right.
Correct.
That's pretty common.
And, you know, and it is, and it's, but, you know, what we're seeing a lot of times in that co-mingle service is people using those trash cans for trash. And, you know, of course, that trash can after recycled, that's to become, go back through and be weighed, and, you know, it's costing the county a bit of money. And this service, it takes a little more time, you know, as far as educating the customer about recycling, which, again, George Southern's, you know, helped me put together pamphlets, informational packets where we can leave, you know, within totes, you know, if the customer not home, and we're able to go, you know, to the door, see if they are home. If not, we're able to leave that information with them, and plus, you know, via email. You know, the other thing with the emails is, we're able, their service state, 24 hours in advance, we would email them, you know, automatically if we go out, and let them remind them that they need to leave a bin down.
We haven't, Sue, do that now, 14-gallon cabs, yes?
I'm sorry.
So you're talking about putting two, two bins?
Correct, right.
In front of a little stadium home, and out, and are you talking about picking them up?
Bi-weekly.
Bi-weekly?
So they would put?
Every two weeks.
So they would put it out on the curb on every other Tuesday?
Right.
Whatever the day would be.
Right. You know, starting off, I'm, you know, I really want my son to be, you know, involved as much as possible, you know, and, you know, I want him to be able to learn everything, and we'll try to do it on Saturdays, first, you know, the first and third Saturday is what my thoughts are. You know, if it grows, you know, of course, I would have to expand that, but. Any other questions?
Any idea how much you charge for it at first?
That I'm still working out, you know, on, you know, the best prices that I can get on totes. You know, right now, I'm roughly looking at, you know, between $14, $15 a month a month, is what I'm kind of looking at. You know, and of course, it's, you know, a little bit more than, you know, $20 a year, but, you know, the, you know, I would be offering a service that, you know, that people can opt to use or not to use.
I agree. Well, people I've talked to, that's between $10 and $20 a month.
Right, right.
They pay them a month, a month?
Give them dollars a month to come pick up their recycling.
That's higher than all our Facebook groups are saying. They're saying basically triple it now, or to get 60, or even 80. Not a month, it's 200, 20 a year.
But I think, I think.
I've seen it.
But I think that, listening to what you say, you'll find out what the market demand is pretty quick.
Oh, yeah, certainly.
So I don't know that that's necessarily a bad thing.
I agree.
I mean, you're going to know which price point is, and I think what Councilman Warren and I have talked about this a little bit, that, you know, I think clearly that there's a lot of concern in the community. They want a recycling program. I think that's given. There are a lot of folks that want it, and I think it's all they realize that $20 a year is not a viable amount of money to sustain a weekly or a bi-weekly program of picking stuff up. That doesn't work either. I mean, that number in and of itself, if it's not supplied with grants or something, that ain't going to work. And I think you were talking about, you thought maybe the city itself would be able to do that. We just don't know what that, without a study or a cost analysis, we just don't know.
Well, that's, that's for sure, but when you're, if you look at the county manager's executive summary, you know, in addition to talking about poor management, poor design, poor execution, the numbers are not particularly hot, so, and as far as a cost perspective. So if we, if we were to triple that as far as the city's concerned with, and without even doing, you know, the whole city, I think the numbers could start getting close, and if it costs a little bit, maybe it's a service that people are looking for. But I don't think it's something that's going to end up costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars. I mean, wouldn't Robert and Dennis, when you agree? I mean, unless we did it wrong.
I think our concern is, just as staff, is that we just, we'd like enough of a study to get a hold of that, so that when we did roll it out, if it did become very popular, we would be able to fund it, and then not, not do something that's not what people want. If we were just going to do the 600 or 700, then we, I think we're not pretty good for it, because that's what the county was doing, 600 in the city. So that's where they were. Just to give you an idea where staff was, and I appreciate all the dialogue, because I think we need to have these kind of talks. We didn't, it's kind of fortuitous, or just, just luck or coincidence, that Mr. Leggett hadn't been coming in at the same time that Jason and I were hearing from the county that they were going to suspend theirs, and that, unfortunately, we were already just about done with our budget cycle at that point, and what we were presenting, so we weren't ready for it. But then Mr. Leggett, once he started saying, hey, I'm going to come in at about the same time that they're going out, he kind of fortuitous. At the same time, George Southern is asking, at the point where they're working and asking for, through GMA, for a practicum, and we thought, well, it might be a good project for an MDA-type student to go in there and look at it, and not to do anything against yours, just to give us an idea of what would we need to do to make it viable, you know, and would it be mandatory recycling, as I've heard councilman mention before, would it be not mandatory, but voluntary, and if so, how much does it cost, and what would the personnel needs be, or would the capital expenses be? And that's kind of where, where we were, because we weren't ready to take it on. And now I think we're just at that point where we've got somebody in the private sector that wants to try it. Will they be able to meet the demand?
Well, you know, I also think there is a quality of life issue that comes with it, you know, people coming here to invest dollars and to move here, and, you know, I'm surprised by the number of visitors that we have that ask me about recycling, and then are surprised that we don't have something more robust than we do, so. But I think there's also, there's also an opportunity here. I mean, I was going to call for us to, to look into recycling and to go into it and have it, have something on the books by 2017. I wasn't suggesting necessarily picking up where the county left off, but, you know, maybe there's an opportunity here, maybe there's a, this is a stopgap measure.
That's kind of what we were looking at, see if it's successful.
I mean, there's still some things that we need to do, and I still think we need to, you know, there's a lot of recycle bins out there. I'd hate to see the county just collect them up and sell them off when, haven't we bought some of those?
Yeah, that's a whole issue there.
We purchased some of those, haven't we not?
We co-agreed to a grant for the first round.
That's right.
And we paid for the second or third.
That's true.
I say, hey, I mean, Jason's like, we have a budget, councilman, sure. And I think that's 100, or maybe 200.
It was 100 or 200. When we say.
There's a, there's an issue there, and that's. Separate issue. I mean, that's a, that's property there, that's like.
Yeah. When we say we, though, it came through the landfill, which is utilized by everybody, and that was part of the agreement.
Those are the dedicated KDB funds.
Part of an MOU, or at least a handshake agreement between the city and county years ago, that's so much money from there.
So at some point, you would say the city manager would say, hey, the recycling program has X amount of dollars of assets, how would y'all like to divide them?
Yeah.
So we're expecting that to come.
Yes. I wanted to get a feel for where we were.
I just, Mayor, I just wanted, kind of wanted to say it out loud.
No, but, you know, it's, it almost sounds like to me, and I'm not going to sit here and tell you, I've probably done it once or twice myself, inadvertently at times, but I don't know that if we go into that program, I would be, it would be hard to convince me that those containers are what we need, because they look just like a garbage can.
It's very, it's very similar to recycle bins all over the country.
I know it does.
It's an education thing, and that leads to the other part of this, which is getting somebody back in that KDB position. I think ultimately, you know, you're going to have to have, you mentioned it, you got to have education.
Education.
If people aren't educated on, but those yellow and blue cans are very common.
I know, but if you go back, when you do what you're talking about, which is separate, make, make the person using the service separated out, then you eliminate a lot of that co-mingling that ends up being a trash can and everything else. So I'm not, I'm not saying one way is better than the other, but.
Maybe so, but you guys pick up 700 of those cans a day?
For sure.
For sure. That's what I'm telling you. I just, you know, I'm in that, I would like to have my trash in that container, if I were recycling in the green, that, that's my difference. You know, I'm a little ridiculous on how, and it's taken me a long time to get there, but I'm like, I finally got it.
Into the blue container?
Oh, I'd load it just with trash, and I won't have enough trash in a week to fill up a blue container.
Got you.
Even London barely makes that much, so, you know, other than that, so. The one, I guess the one concern I do have, Robert, and I guess Alvin as well, if, if this is a, we use the term stopgap, if this is a solution, why don't we look at it? I worry Mr. Leggett goes out, spends resources, spends a lot of time, a lot of sweat equity, and then we're going to come to him and say, you know what, we appreciate it, but we found a better one. I worry about doing that. I don't, I don't want to do that, too. I'm not saying we're going to, but.
But, I mean, and not to put words in your mouth, it sounds like this is not a 100% business investment, you're going to do this 40 hours a week. It sounds more like, hey, you're, you and your son had a good idea, there's an opportunity here to help serve the community. What happens if 4,000 people pick up the phone and want your service tomorrow?
I mean.
Can you, can you pick up 4,000 bins in the next two weeks?
Sure can. I mean, as long as they order, you know, as long as the order comes in, I don't think we're going to have 4,000, but, you know, people call me, they'll. If that be the case, I do have two employees that are, two guys that are outstanding by that I can, that I can hire right now, you know, to go ahead and get stuff going. You know, as far as purchasing and all that, it's not an issue.
Well, I don't, again, I don't see any reason why we can't do both. I definitely can't give it, give a huge shot, I just, at some point, we are allowing someone to do a service that we would potentially like to do, and I just, I worry.
Alvin?
I'm asking you, I don't know what happens in two years, I mean, I may not be here for a month, so, you know, but in, in two years, if we're like, we figured this out, we've got another CNG truck, we figured it out, we can now do 700 in a clip, and we figured out we can offer it for $71 a year, or whatever number Jason tells us.
That business would be for sale, too, so keep that in mind if you're.
We're competing, I, I, I don't know, I have no idea if there's any, if there's any issue, but if we're allowing someone to do that, could we, is there ever, is there an issue that we could get into, Alvin?
I mean, it's, it's, it's also odd that we're.
I'm not sure what it is, but yes.
Okay. So, so should we look at this, Alvin, as this is a one-year deal? A two-year deal?
That's the way it's written, is a year, that we would be able to come back and evaluate. Maybe, I'm just speaking for you, Mr. Leggett, that would be, I, maybe this group even today could say, what would we consider to be successful? If he's out there picking up, I'm just making this up.
Sure.
Then we'd probably say, we want a more robust recycling than that. Then we'd come back in a year and say, we're gonna compete with it, because we think we can do it better.
My number is best. I would say he'd a ten percent in twelve months.
But if he's out there and getting a thousand to a thousand, I'd say, he's doing great. Why don't anybody send you a...
And, and I don't have any problem with probably saying, yeah.
We're gonna do that with...
If order changed and change their mind about that, I just, I don't want us to, I don't want Alvin to...
Wherever you go.
I gotta talk about Alvin's video when he first started, it was completely black, and if we had made it brighter. So, I don't want, I don't want us to do it, but I, I'm more, it's more important for me that we continue recycling and offer to our customers, and they can pay with the market data. Abs- absolutely. I just, I, two years from now, I don't want us, is there an issue?
I think we need to make it clear, I think we need to make it clear in the minutes.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important that, I know Mr. Leggett understands that if, if the city does, well, I would hope you would, does, you know, does an analysis of this and can look at within the resources that we have, that we can provide that service to the taxpayers of the city for X amount of money. And if we can do so at a price that we are convinced will allow it to be sustainable at the city level. And it's way different from yours. That's going to be a problem because the citizens of Statesboro are going to demand the recycling at a price that they can afford. So, I think that comes with some risks to you.
Certainly.
If you wanna enter into this and try this for a year and try to get your costs down and still make money and be competitive and those kinds of things. So, I think if everyone understands that that's going to be the situation, and you understand that, and that's a risk, for lack of a better term, that you take.
I, I view it that we have two more streams of income than Mr. Leggett has. At some point, we could go back to those that are collecting it and say, you're gonna cut us in on, when you resell these number-two plastics to Troy, Alabama, you gotta cut us in on that, that money. That's number one. Number two is, how many trucks a day do we have? Ten trucks a day? Seventeen trucks a day go to Wayne County?
Ten, eleven.
Ten, eleven trucks a day, if, if recycling numbers were to drop that num, drop that, that saved how much a day? One truck's, you close them to four, four hundred dollars?
You just said, do you mean...
Let's call it ten.
How much is that?
It's like four hundred bucks, I think.
Three hundred dollars a week.
So, I'm saying, if we were to drop it, we have another stream of income, and that is, we're reducing the amount of money that we're having to send to Wayne County. And you don't necessarily have that anymore. So, we would be very appreciative that you're providing that service. I mean, you're, you know, so...
May I ask, I mean, if something did, you know, happen in that, that nature as far as y'all want to continue the program, say, years, years down the road, would it be possible to be able to recycle items that y'all do not accept in the co-mingled containers as far as glass or, you know, and stuff like that? Because that's what I had initially wanted to do to get approved, but, you know, it kinda led to a lot more...
Well, since this is a one-year agreement, I'd say that's up for negotiation in probably around ten months.
There's, there's no, there's no money in the guy that gets glass.
Right.
There's just no money.
Right.
We would make the most on that in our mind, in our...
Sure. You know, you gotta keep in mind, I'm...
We love her.
I don't want anything to do, I don't want anything to do with the recycle, I mean, I'm...
You're on a transport.
It's, that's, you know, I just wanna provide the service.
Well, you're looking to provide the service not only in the city but in the county as well, right?
Right.
And, you know, that may end up being your bread and butter customer base, and yet we're served doing, you know, where you can have the bins and do seven hundred trucks in a day with a two-man team. I mean, that's, it's gonna be tough to have that kind of efficiency unless you got one of his trucks.
Right.
And then you're gonna buy his natural gas, so.
Yeah, I would never want to...
Well, I, again, I have seen no reason why we can't approve this, but I, I would like to, I would like, I don't know where we bring this up, but I, I'd like to bring something up in regards to recycling as well, so that I'd like to charge the city staff with looking at this. I'd like to charge them with talking to the county about getting those bins. I'd like to see about if the truck is a feasible, usable piece of property in the city, and the county's not using it because they don't do individual bins, let's see if we can't get them to give that over. And, and I'd like to see about getting KBB either restarted, whether it's at the county or at the city, but that thing's gotta get back going, because if anybody's gonna promote recycling, even your business, it's gotta be somebody in that position.
Let me ask you real quick, when, and maybe this was in here and I missed it, but when were you planning on starting?
Um, I mean, a lot of it had to do with the approval. I didn't wanna invest really anything until I got it approved.
So, assuming it were to be approved, when would you start?
Um, I mean, I would, but I'm, my goal was September one.
Okay, so...
So, I mean, that's, that's my goal.
So, when was it?
But you don't have the authority here. What do you mean?
Don't have, don't have, I have vehicles and all that, but I don't have any of the bins, nor do I have the material as far as the educational materials. I mean, some, stuff like that will be, you know, take some time to, you know, to bring up and all that, but, you know, as far as actual service, you know, we gotta do it.
So, I think it's apparently clear that Council would like to see, and an analysis done of the city doing this themselves. Would that be fair?
Yeah, by, by fiscal two thousand seventeen, actually.
Okay, so that would be July one, two thousand seventeen.
Right. And voluntary, it doesn't, we're not talking mandatory, this would be voluntary.
Okay. And then the KBB position, we can look at that separately. But insofar as this particular agenda item is concerned, we're looking at staff doing an analysis, bringing us back information, or potentially look at recycling beginning July one, two thousand seventeen.
Well, that would be a separate resolution.
Excuse me, two thousand sixteen. I just wanna make sure I'm understanding what you're saying.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
So, with that in mind, you heard what Council was saying.
Yes, ma'am.
To look into, to potentially start July one, two thousand sixteen, maybe, but that will be a target, so. Just wanna make sure everything, everybody's clear. Any other questions?
And just so you know, before I had any idea that your MOU was gonna be on the agenda, I was already talking about all of this, so when I saw that, I said, whoa.
That is, that is true. That is true. Okay. And does Council have any other questions?
Hope you luck.
Okay, do I have a consideration to, a motion to approve resolution two zero one five dash thirty-four?
So, will you approve?
Okay, do I have any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Good luck. Agenda item seven, consideration of a motion to approve resolution two zero one five dash thirty-five. A resolution to approve adjustments to the pay and compensation plan to amend the following job titles and descriptions of the city engineer to the Director of Public Works and Engineering and the Senior Assistant City Engineer to City Engineer, Mr. Grant.
Jeffrey Graham, Director of Public Resources. You'll see your packet, Council. Copy of job descriptions, a proposed organizational chart, as well as job descriptions. And you also see a request for a city engineer and senior assistant city engineer position classification to be slightly amended as to their job titles and descriptions. Basically, in a nutshell, the pay grades for these positions will remain the same. However, the city engineer position may be placed at a grade twenty-four if a professional engineering certification is possessed or obtained by the incumbent. This will keep the professional, the PE certification incentive for this position consistent with the incentive currently provided for the assistant city engineer position. If you turn to the organizational chart real quick, you'll see a proposed organizational chart, and I know Robert may want to speak to this in a, in a moment as well, too. But currently, we have a city engineer, which Robert Keshar has assumed the last few years. And that position, in a nutshell, the title would be changed to Director of Public Works and Engineering. The second position, which is a senior assistant, which is senior assistant city engineer, that position would, the title would be changed to city engineer. So, it'd be pretty much the same setup. This was something that was discussed many, many years ago, moving to this format. And I think through discussions, it was something that was desired at this time, being of the current movement that's happening with the organization, so. Is there anything you want to speak to that, Robert?
It's coming up here as well. We can flip that light.
Flip the light.
Yeah, I can't see it. But maybe...
Well, we're gonna get a little closer.
Yeah, I can't see it.
Go ahead, Robert.
Really, when, back in two thousand nine, maybe two thousand ten, I think, or two thousand nine, when public works, when the public works director retired, it was determined that they weren't gonna replace that position. That's when they combined engineering and public works into the nine divisions that they're under now, which I was over, and with the title of city engineer. And I, I asked to keep the city engineer position, one I was used to, and it just made sense. But now that we're changing some personnel, and the deputy, I moved into the deputy city manager position, I think it makes more sense to change the title, and that's really what we're changing here, is titles of two positions. It's the old city engineer position, which I'd like to call the Director of Engineering and Public Works. And it's just more descriptive, because that's exactly what it is. This person oversees public works and engineering, which made up, was nine divisions, it's ten divisions now because of Stormwater Division recently being formed. And then you actually take the city engineer title and move it down one, which would be what the senior assistant city engineer's current title is. They would be the city engineer. And it's gonna make the most sense, again, because they're, they're, they're over all those divisions, but they're primarily are going to be over the engineering division, protective inspection, which is your building inspector, your, your government buildings, which is custodial, and then streets and parks. So, it's very logical, and it makes, it makes the most sense. It may not make as much sense to y'all, but it's just that the titles are gonna be real clear in public what they are. So, just in a nutshell, taking the city engineer position and re-tiling it Director of Engineering and Public Works, taking the senior assistant city engineer position and re-tiling it city engineer. And that's, that shows you what they, on a day-to-day operation, too, they would be over, which in essence is exactly the same as what it is now from a practical standpoint.
So, will that leave two positions to backfill?
There are two positions that would leave the assistant city engineer position.
What about the city engineer and assistant city engineer? I mean, it's a vertical. I mean, there's, there's nobody else underneath the Director of Public Works. It seems strange to have two titles. Just curious from a structural standpoint.
I guess, I'm guessing, I'm assuming it's so that, Robert said, public-wise, so the public realizes this guy is over, guy, this employee is over engineering and public works.
Right.
I guess it's wanting to get it more clear to them.
Yeah.
So, that would be likely.
It actually seems more like a living title to me, but city engineer seems like, well, I'm sort of all engineer.
A lot of places, actually, the public works director is, is over engineering. You just see it a lot of different ways. And this was the most self-explanatory, basically, when you said engineering, that engineer's over engineering and traffic and the things that you would typically see related to an engineer. So, it just made, made most sense to me and to staff, as we talked about it, with Jason and Brad agree.
Well, I guess the only thing I had was it's vertically integrated. There's nobody that's under the Director of Public Works and Engineering that's not also under the city engineer, aside from his administrative straight of assistance. So, having two different titles, just, I guess it's okay. They're doing the same position.
Engineers think differently than I do, so I guess they, they need to...
I want to draw a picture.
And present it in all the colors, they do the elements.
There's colors, there's... It'll work for you?
That's all we're asking for.
Also, do you feel, Jeff, do you feel that that makes it easier for the staff to, to understand that as well?
That's right.
And I guess that there's a staff thing, a lot of work for the city engineer over the Department of Public, Public Works.
Well, that's the same. They work for both? Does that mean that I see no distinction between the two, aside from one's the boss of the... I'm sorry, am I looking at it wrong, or?
It used to be, I guess the difference would be, history, it used to be a city engineer, and there were two assistant city engineers, and there was a senior assistant engineer, and it got, it got confusing, like, who's the, who's the assistant? You look toward the future, and you got another assistant city engineer, then it gets confusing to have the same title. So, this just differentiates some titles, and it just made, it was just for clarity, what we all agreed on based on looking at other places, how they did it. Just an opinion. But I will tell you, you know, regardless of whether these are approved or not, I'm gonna be moving Jason Boils from, from his position, which is currently the senior assistant city engineer position, into the, what will be, if y'all approve it, the Director of Engineering and Public Works. And then Brad Deal will be promoted into the city engineer position for his current assistant city engineer position.
I will say this, you've been city engineer for how long?
Eighteen years.
So, I, I just have to trust after eighteen years that you will, you'll have structured that for them. I feel comfortable with that. I do. I'm not too soon.
Even though he left for Greener, he left for Greener Hills for a little while, and he realizes the era. He's back.
That's right.
No, we, we always...
You, what I'm thinking of again, but you have people that are really qualified in-house to do this, except for outside, isn't that right?
It's my opinion, but each time, you know, I look at that, at least in the things that I have control over, I, I look at that to see if I think outside would be better. Being that we, not only are these two people exceptionally qualified, they're what I would call people that are local. They like Statesboro, they wanna be in Statesboro, they've proven themselves exceptionally over the last fourteen months. And to lose that institutional knowledge would be detrimental right now, because we've been short two people in that department now for fourteen months.
I, I just think that you have people that say...
And we work on that succession plan. A lot of departments work hard on getting that succession plan. And people always start out here from Statesboro, and they come in and they work their way, and it's important for them to know where they may be able to go. In the whole scheme of things, I think it's important for them around. Proving every day. That's all I got.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to ask before I ask for a motion to approve resolution two zero one five dash thirty-five? Hey, do I have a motion to approve resolution two zero one five dash thirty-five?
So, will you?
Now, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Agenda item eight, there's other business from city council. I don't have any, but I'll open it up to city council to see if another city councilman has any business they'd like to abuse.
I think we were gonna introduce some about recycling.
We talked about it a little bit.
Anything else?
I was gonna recommend to Harry, Jason.
Yeah. I wanna hear off of people. Done with that. Okay, we'll go to agenda item nine, city managers' comments. Do you have anything for us? It's Keshar.
I've got three items. One, I'd like Jason to do a brief update on the roll-off program, and Billy, who is the sanitation superintendent, is here as well. Billy, Senator.
Thank you, Robert. By the year ago, city states were entered into the roll-off service business. Today, we purchased GTA roll-off containers and retrofitted two existing trucks to roll-off points, trying to stretch our dollars as best we can. We have managed to, it was a little slow getting started, as one would imagine, but today, we've added a gross revenue of twenty-five thousand, and we'd love to see that continue to grow as we continue to expand the service and also to reduce our operational expenses from outsourcing that service support.
Are we competitive with the, with the, can you just pick up, I can name a name on the change we've done. The other, the other people in town that are private, are we way below it? Are we, are we competitive so that it's not, immediately you go, oh, God, the city's undercutting this business, so...
Technically, I believe they're not allowed to operate in the city. Is that correct?
We explored that issue before. I'm not sure it's settled currently.
We haven't pushed that issue.
We haven't pushed that issue, um, to date.
No, no one's come before us, obviously, saying, we are unhappy that the city's not doing this, I just, I just said, I guess, I guess make your case, I'm just gonna ask to see if. I hadn't heard anything. None of the companies are called, and I've entered all some businesses, I can see a lot of those.
You'll see, you'll see theirs, and the county's, and ours, everywhere. And we don't go outside the city limits right now. We kept it inside the city limits. But I do commend Billy and Jason, you know, they got a program up, it's, uh, it's on the revenue on the positive side, like we talked about last week, about what my next item will be about. Splot dollars are down, looks like tax dollars, property tax dollars will be down about the same next year, so, we're trying to be favorable in what we're doing. Thanks, Jason. The next item is millage rate, I just wanted to, to note that, really, the information I got immediately after the last meeting, I thought that we were going to see an increase in assessed value. It's the information that we obtained from the county tax assessor, up through Sue's office and the tax clerk. And it appeared that we had a positive number, which at one time made us believe that we would probably have to have those three public hearings, should we decide to keep the millage rate at the same. However, a day or two after that, we learned that it actually negative, which was surprising to us, that the reassessment would come up negative. The explanation that I got, Cindy West got, and Sue Starling received as well, was that the, the county assessor just spot-checked a few places in town, and those happened, the reassessments happened to be down there, and that's, that was why we got that number. So our tax, turns out, when we fill out some of the forms we do, our gross digest is gonna be about the same as last year, because we did have some increase just in construction, but we got a decrease in assessments. That being said, in the next year, next calendar year, twenty sixteen, they'll do a full assessment, if I understood correctly, we hope to see gains, significant gains there. All that being said, it, we'll actually have a, a negative, if we keep our, we would have, we'd have to roll our millage rate up to be able to receive the same amount of tax dollars next year. Uh, my recommendation is to keep the millage rate the same, and for that reason, we don't have to have three public hearings, we'll have just one, we actually don't even have to have the one public hearing, but we think is the right thing to do. We'll have a public hearing at the September first council meeting, and immediately after, if you agree, council will adopt the millage rate, which I'm recommending to stay the same as the last, this current millage rate, and that way, or last year, that way we'll actually lose a little bit on tax dollars.
So the projected loss, that was almost like eleven thousand, based on?
That was the number Cindy gave, I didn't pronounce any numbers, but it's not a whole lot. Of course, we've got a TAD district that's gonna have some dollars struck over there, they're still ours, but they're coming to the general fund.
Robert, do you have any idea how big the sample is, sample size?
Cindy might, I did not hear that.
When I met with the tax assessor, basically what he said was, it looks like, um, State House and Greenborough and Hospital was the biggest block, and that's where the biggest area that they had assessed.
Was it specifically the, the rental properties that were owned there, or was it the neighborhood itself?
He said it part of those, that's what he said, off the question gave.
Okay.
And this was a spot check, right, you said he didn't do everything?
Well, he said, they did a spot check in Greenborough, happens to be the biggest chunk of that spot check, was it?
Yes.
We questioned it as well, but.
Maybe Mr. General.
Do you think, did he drop the rent?
I think he did. I'm sorry, I can't say, we're fledged, had to drop the rent. So anyway, we won't have those August, we had two set up for August twenty, twenty-seven.
So now we're just gonna do the one on September first.
September the first.
At what time is it?
Not on YouTube?
Yeah, if you're during the council meeting.
Not on YouTube. Okay.
And the last item I have, Sue can update you on the qualifications for council seats.
Please, um, cabinet meetings on Monday, August thirty-first, eight-thirty, and ends Friday, section four.
Okay.
And it is two from seven person.
Okay.
And that's the two-three.
And I think you've already run off copies of packets and things?
Yes, those will be ready on Monday.
So you got it?
I do have one more thing.
Yes, ma'am.
We don't have our profit tax sale, um, so from the gross debt, two-three.
Okay. Okay. So is there anything else?
Come in, that's all right.
So we'll go to addendum ten, which is public comments, and it looks like we have one person. Do we have anybody besides Mr. Thomas that's asked to make a comment today, Ms. Sue?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Thomas, do you want to come over? And can I remind you to please speak to council and not turn your back on council when you're speaking?
I'm gonna face you while I speak. I'm Bill Thomas, unindicted, unelected, uh, Ms. Sue, five oh five North Main Street. My number is five three six zero one eight six, should anybody need to contact me. And please put me on the next agenda, both spots, Ms. Sue. I agree, Mr. Brett, you probably won't be here in three months. My experience tells me one thing, and that is that when leaders like y'all are that afraid to let somebody like me speak, you got something to hide. That's disturbing to me, and you guys have always been this way, when I bring up things, city business, is that you guys want me out of here as quickly as you can get me out of here. You either did something wrong, or you've got plenty to hide. We'll, we'll figure all of that out. If you've done nothing wrong, don't be angry with me, I'm not talking to you. If you have, you know who you are. There have been two internal affairs investigations. Scott Brunson was fired as a result of the first one, the second one, he was reinstated. Oh, by the way, people, if you need me on Facebook, I'm there, or at bigbadwolfcatering@yahoo.com. We got two councilmen decided they're gonna run again this year. Neither one of them can make it on time, or generally don't make it at all. I just can't imagine why you'd want to re-elect them. They'll probably be indicted before they serve their first day anyway. If we can get those things done, clean, clean up city council, the employees of the city will no longer have to live in fear. They won't live and work in a hostile work environment. There is a great day coming, this will ultimately be fixed. And to the employees, I say, y'all be patient, you needn't live in fear, once you contact the FBI, you are protected. That'll conclude my remarks, thank you so much, council, for your kind indulgence.
Do I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss personnel matters, real estate handle, or potential litigation?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Please state by saying aye.
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session. Addendum twelve, consideration of motion to approve a contract, uh, grant of realty between the mayor and city council of Statesboro in Gentandra Patel, as well as change order with Tyson Tuntz Construction, in the amount of forty-six thousand, thirty-nine dollars, to fulfill the city's obligations under the contract to the grant of realty. Do you want to say anything about that, Robert? That's the motion.
Anything, do you want to do?
Yeah, you can have to. Okay.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, meeting is adjourned. Oh, wait a minute. One last time.